Read us back in the session?
No, thank you, Mayor. The City Council has reconvened from closed session with no reportable action taken.
Okay, thank you. Next, please join Councilmember Dobie, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Stand up and put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. Dear Lord, thank you for this wonderful day here in Southern California. We ask your blessing and guidance on the residents of Los Alamos and look forward to your help in guiding us through a summer where all of us can feel good about our long fight against this evil illness that is affecting so many of not only our residents, but their families and friends. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Okay, next we're going to have a presentation to Amy Lakin, Executive Director of CASA Youth. We also have CASA Board President Greg Magnuson joining us as well. This is in recognition of being selected the 2021 California Nonprofit of the Year by Senator Tom Umberg.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Senator Umberg's, can you hear me? Senator Umberg's office has presented CASA Youth Shelter with the 2021 Nonprofit of the Year. I'll let you speak, Amy, because you can speak more eloquently about CASA Youth Shelter, of course, but for over 43 years CASA has served and nurtured youth ages 12 to 17 with shelter, counseling, and support services, empowering them to come through their crisis with increased confidence, stability, and tools for continued growth. It is a wonderful organization in Los Alamos, very involved in the community and doing such good for the community. We are happy to have you in our city for all the good that you do, and this is one of many well-deserved recognitions that CASA and your team has received as well. So if you'd like to say something, we have a certificate for you.
Thank you.
There you go. I imagine Emeline will want to take some pictures, but I'm letting you say a few words first or after or whenever you'd like.
Okay. I'll just say thank you so much for this honor, and we were honored by Senator Umberg to receive this, and we're honored to be recognized by our city. We are honored to be a part of the community of Los Alamos. CASA wouldn't be what it is without this community that has supported us for 43 years and made sure that our kids have what they need. Just an example, when we had the break-in last year, everybody in the city really stepped up, from the police department to the city, to all of the donation drives that you all do. We wouldn't be where we are without this community, so we're incredibly grateful. And all the kids that we serve, the teens ages 12 to 17, are better off because of us and because of the community that we're in. So thank you very much. Do you want to add anything, Greg?
Thank you, and of course, the community would not be what it is without CASA either, so, thank you, Amy. Want to take a picture?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay, next we'll go on to oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. We've got a couple of gentlemen in the room. Here we go. Mr. Underwood.
Well, Mayor Chirco and members of the council, I'm John Underwood, representing Los Al TV today, and we're very happy to echo the invocation comments of Councilmember Bates earlier. We are at LA TV presenting a program of, on a very serious note, and apropos of your comments, Councilmember Bates, COVID-19 still on all of our minds. Hopefully, we are now on our heels again from this new variant. We know not which way we go with it at this point in time. We hope that it will die out and that we will all be back to business as usual, but we're presenting an hour-long program of interviews and professional medical assessment of this thing called Long COVID, which is affecting somewhere between 10 and 50% to 60% of our symptomatic cases of COVID. We have interviewed people here locally and people around the county of Orange, and we have some medical representation from UCI, the latest research on the subject. And I want to bring it to everybody's attention because it does affect all of us in one way or another, sometimes officially, sometimes personally, but always in a very real and in many cases devastating way. So we want to present that on Los Al TV and on our website for all to see and to take note of and take caution with. So it'll be out and in our schedule in the next week or so and can be viewed online at losaltv.org as well. So just wanted to bring that to all of your attention. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any other comments? With that, we'll move on to council announcements. Councilmember Dobie, I see you grabbing your microphone, so we'll start with you.
That's what I get. Okay. Hey, I don't mind. I'll go first. All right, what have I been up to? So first, I went to a ribbon cutting at Teofilo. Wendy, did I say that correctly? Teofilo? Okay, so their coffee was very good, but the staff there were outstanding. The owner was such a kind heart. I stayed and talked to him even after the cutting was over, and he informed me that on Saturdays and Sundays, they do waffles with their coffee. Mm-hmm, go try that out. I went to the Fourth of July show, which was wonderful. I love being on the base for our Fourth, because we can see Seal Beach's fireworks and I guess it's Santa Ana's fireworks and Garner Grove's fireworks and everybody else's fireworks, including our own. So I really feel very spoiled that we get to see all the beautiful lights. And then I went to a ribbon cutting at Petrini, and their pizza is delicious. They have cannolis that are pretty out of sight as well, but their pizza, I had to try it, like, I tried it for everyone so that I could tell you guys with full faith and authority that it is outstanding. Highly recommend it. And then I had my regular HR Commission Committee meetings and my OC mosquito vector control district learn about the mosquitoes. And I went to the drive-up music, and Erica Halberg, Halberg, she did such a phenomenal job. Everything was taken care of. There was a large, very spread-out group there of hardcore fans. These people were like dancing and singing, and it was such a nice time. I'm so appreciative of all of the events that our city put on. I always tell people, we are small, but we are so mighty. You wouldn't know that it's like this very small handful of people that put on such spectacular events. And my recommendations for this week of where you should go is again, Donut Boss, because I think that they have the best staff. They're always so kind. And Cassidy Nails again, because I went again, and what's that new, there's another pizza place next to Madera's.
Angelina's?
Yes. So I don't think I should do two pizza places, but I think we should do two pizza places. So that's what I've been up to.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Nefolda?
Thank you. A little bit slow over a month, but I also attended the Fourth of July fireworks spectacular. It was a great event. You know, I thought it was very well-run and, you know, although it was called a drive-up, you know, I just noticed that people were still interacting, the kids were out playing. It was a great time. I took a tour today on the base with Tom Lasser and learned a lot about the base, the relationship with the city, and they've got a lot of programs going on that I think that are very beneficial to the city. And then finally, the pop-up dog park has been fantastic at Laurel Park. I love it, you know. I always used to have to go to Eldorado Park, but we've been taking our little dog here, and for the most part, there's always been people there, and it's been a good thing and we enjoyed it, so, good job.
Councilmember Bates?
Sure. One, I had the privilege of joining Tanya at that Teofilo Coffee Company, the grand opening. As the chief was there, a number of our city staff were there. If you get a chance, it's really worth stopping by. A little bit different take on coffee, but the staff, as Tanya mentioned, is just delightful and fun to be with. A second event that I'm glad I attended, I got a chance to meet our new supervisor, Katrina Foley, and that was at the place that we really, as a city, helped get off the ground, which is the pool at the Joint Forces Training Center, and it was a game between the US and Russia. Needless to say, who we were rooting for, and the score was very lopsided, so it worked out pretty well. It was the US Women's National Team getting ready for the Olympics, playing Russia, and they were able to win the game by quite a large margin, but a good crowd, very supportive, very supportive of both teams when they were scoring and that. But, so it was just a nice atmosphere out at the base. And then lastly, I attended a meeting of the State League Revenue and Taxation Committee, where they're reviewing a lot of the changes that are coming from the federal government on new funding sources and how they impact cities. So a good month and look forward to continuing all the good work that our Parks and Rec group does in working with the community and developing programs that really are helping our kids during the summer when they're not able to be in school, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
As with everybody else, I attended the Fourth of July. It was wonderful. Before that, I usually do my neighborhood bike ride around and mooch off of people's parties and eat their food, and it was just nice this year. Last year, people were outside, but it was much more cautious because they weren't sure if they were supposed to be together or not be together. This year was just all-out party, and it was neat to see bounce houses all over the place, music going on. It was just, it was back to what we're used to seeing, which was really nice. Staff did another wonderful job of wrangling all these cars into the base. There weren't lines down Cotella and lines down Los Al Boulevard. The reservation process seemed to work really well, and once you're on the base, like, you know, kids were running around and playing. We even saw some little rogue fireworks shows, so I hope the police department wasn't too busy that night, but they, some of them were quite spectacular over in Carrier Row. But anyway, so with that, and then with Fire Authority, the last board meeting, we approved to renew the contract with Fire, which is our intelligence biplane that gives the boots on the ground, the sources from up above, to know how they need to evacuate, which the way the fire is moving. That's housed, along with our supertanker over at the training base, which is awesome. They're extremely supportive of everything we do. It gives them a regional presence, which is also great. And then I do want to remind everybody, CASA's already left, but they have their fundraiser coming up August 21st. It's a poker party, which is a lot of fun. If you can't, if you don't think girls can play poker, come watch. It's pretty fun. And I think that's it.
Great, thank you. So in the last month, I also attended the fireworks show at the base for Fourth of July, which was awesome. It was well-organized. One question I think I may have mentioned to the city manager is whether we can consider or talk to the base about maybe, and maybe this is just not possible, but having the fireworks more on our side of the city. I know it's all the way at that end towards Cypress, and some individuals who went to, for example, Orville Lewis Park said, "We could barely see them now. It seems like they're so far away." So there may be logistical reasons why the base couldn't do that, but something I thought I would mention, because it's something that's been brought up to me, and, you know, we've got the base corner here near Little Cottonwood. To the extent we were able to move it that direction, you know, people would be able to see it better from Little Cottonwood, from Orville, from most of the neighborhoods in the city probably as well. So just something to think about. That morning, I got to emcee my neighborhood parade and potluck as well, and it was like, like Mayor Protam said, it was like back to normal, full party. Everyone was happy. We did water balloon fights and, you know, water balloon tosses at the park, and people were grilling hot dogs, and it was, I may have gotten a hold of the water hose and, you know, sprayed some people in my neighborhood. It was just really, really fun to see things back to normal, so everybody was really excited about that. I attended the music in the park at Little Cottonwood along with Councilmember Dobie with that band Flyer, I think it was. They were great.
Flyer, I didn't realize it was their name.
Yeah, some of the kids at the park challenged me to a game of basketball, so I had to take it upon myself to teach them not to do that.
That's not what I heard.
I checked, Tanya's son was one of the kids. I checked out the pop-up dog park at Laurel Park, which was really neat. It's for the month of July, right? So the rest of the month of July, there's a section, I didn't see signs, but I understood the smaller section was for the smaller dogs, and then there's a much bigger section for the bigger dogs. And is this something we're going to be doing every year, or has this, I never had a dog until this year, so I never really paid attention as much as I probably should have, but is this something that we're going to be doing on a yearly basis, or?
Yes, Mayor, this is something that we do during Parks Make Life Better Month for July, every July.
Yeah, it was great, and the other people I saw there were really happy, and it was really neat. I attended the Los Al Chamber ribbon cutting for Petrini's, which Councilmember Dobie also mentioned, which is a great new place on Cotella, near Costco and the racetrack there. Really great. The owners are really involved in the community as well, so check that place out if you get a chance. Registered for the Glow in the Dark Fun Run, I imagine we'll get a report on that next month, or you can do it now if you'd like, but we're going to do the Race Los Al this year will not be at the base, well, there will not be a race on the base, it will be through the streets of Los Alamos, right, Emeline? Okay, so check out our website for more information on that and to register. There's a 5K, there's the Glow in the Dark Fun Run. What else am I missing?
We have 5K, a 10K, and the Groove and Glide, which is a skate, and then the Glow in the Dark Fun Run, which is sponsored by Self and Credit Union.
You have to bring your own skates, I imagine?
Yes.
Okay. There's my out. I don't have, I don't have skates.
We're going to go fund me. It's not timed, so, just a fun skate.
Fun skate, all right, all right. And then I attended Orange County Sanitation District Meetings, Administrative Committee Meeting, and the main District Board Meeting. A lot of business was performed during those meetings, but one of the main ones was, main issues that was taken up was approval of the fiscal year 2021 to 2022 budget for Orange County Sanitation District. That was for $408 million, covers an operating cost of $183.9 million and capital improvement program of $224.6 million, which is $6.8 million before, below last year's budget. So the Sanitation District is doing great things. They're going to be doing some stuff in our city. I think we're going to get a report on that next month, is that right? Okay, so they're going to, they're going to be replacing some of the pipes on Los Alamos Boulevard. Are they doing any on Cotella? I'm trying to recall now, on Cotella as well, so we'll get a report on that next month. There's going to be some disruptions to traffic on both Los Alamos and Cotella, but this is a once every 50-year project, and it's just, happens to be that time that this work is going to be necessary. So like I said, we'll have a report on that next month, and with that, I'll pass it along to the city manager.
Sir, I don't have anything to report, however, I would like to turn it over to Emeline Noda to talk a little bit about the, all the events that we have coming up.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and members of the City Council. We have our last Memorial Care Miller Children's and Women's Hospital, Long Beach. Music and Movies. My mic, I don't know, Doug?
Should be on now.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Hello. Okay, so we have our last Music and Movies this Saturday at Little Cottonwood Park. We're showing up at approximately 8:00. It kind of depends on when the sun goes down, and you can register on Eventbrite. And then following Music and Movies, we have our Memorial Care Drive-Up Film and Food Fest at Los Alamos Youth Baseball Parking Lot, and that's two Fridays a month from August to October. Some of the movies are Troll's World Tour, Remember the Titans, Zootopia, Spider-Man, Into the Spider-Verse, Monsters Inc., and Hotel Transylvania. You can also register, it's $10 a vehicle, and that's also on Eventbrite. And then we have servlosal.org. We are taking volunteer sign-ups, so please register to be a volunteer. That's September 10th and 11th. And then, just as a reminder, as the mayor said, racelosal.com is the website you can register for the race, and that's September 17th and 18th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the warrants. Does anyone have any questions about the warrants?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just two quick questions. One on page five, and it has to do with the accounting system maintenance under Tyler Technologies. I'm wondering if the city manager might be able to give us a little bit of background on that item, and then also, and I had mentioned to this, we had talked earlier about the difference in the cost of the two warrant registers for payroll, one being significantly higher than the previous one, and since they're every two weeks, they should be essentially the same, and he was going to, I think, get us some information on that difference, so please.
So, thank you, Councilmember Bates, and the first one is actually an upgrade to our accounting software. This is something that, over time, that we are upgrading through the different, they're called different, I'm sorry, the word is escaping me.
Module?
Not modules, but versions, I'm sorry, and essentially allowing us to have more functionality with the way that we are actually doing our reporting, and also some additional security measures. And also, we've been reviewing all of these to ensure that there's enough checks and balances in place, so this is again, just an upgrade to that system. And with regards to the discrepancies that you were referring to, with regards to overtime, I believe was the main issue, that we did have a number of events here during the past billing cycle where we were having a significant amount of people out on overtime. This particularly was with both the incidents that were occurring with the school district and the actual officers that needed to be on call for that situation, and then also with, I believe, and the chief can step in and correct me if I'm wrong, but also the fact that we had a significant amount of manpower out on the street during the Fourth of July. I don't think that there was anyone, any police officer who wasn't on duty that night. But also, we will be looking at ways to basically normalize that cost so that it doesn't show the spikes that you're seeing. I believe that there's a way to actually flatten that curve going forward.
Any other questions?
I'll move it.
You have a motion by Mayor Protam Hasselbrink, seconded by Councilmember Dobie. Roll call, Mayor Chirco?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie?
Aye.
Councilmember Nefolda?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 11, Consent Calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Would anyone like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Items D and F, please.
D and F?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can we get a motion on the balance?
So moved.
Second.
We're doing a roll call on the balance? No.
We have a motion by Councilmember Bates, seconded by Councilmember Dobie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'll get the hang of it, Wendy, one day. Okay. Item D.
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, my questions on item D have to do with maybe just a brief discussion. It would be nice if we could eventually get this in the recommendation, and we had talked about this a little earlier on a timeframe for those projects, and then can you just comment on what would be involved if, for example, we needed to terminate this contract for lack of performance? Now, I don't anticipate that's going to be the case, but I didn't see the specifics in here regarding that, so if you could, would just comment on that, I'd appreciate it.
Of course. I'm actually going to ask our deputy city manager, Ron Noda, to talk a little bit maybe about the timeline of the project.
Okay. Ron?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, members of the City Council. So tonight, we're asking for council to award the contract to the vendor that we suggested there, Onyx Paving. We did go out to a formal RFP, and we did end up with, I believe, seven submittals, and so this was the lowest price, again, Onyx Paving. So then, once we get that and we get our insurance and our contract situated, we anticipate the start of construction on approximately the start of August, and then we're, you know, we're going to probably end, probably about a month and a half, about six-week project around early October or mid-October, so around there. Okay? Now, in terms of, I just want to make sure I understand your question. If we wanted to terminate the contract because of a lack of performance, is that your question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In our standard contract with, you know, most vendors or contractors, that we do have a termination clause in there stating that we can terminate due to a lack of performance or any other reason that we justify?
Okay, so if in fact, in that they are the low bidder, although at least it's close, that's good news, that if in fact, they're not able to perform, that they've got 30 other contracts with local governments around this area because there's so much money in the pipeline, and we don't see performance, say after, you know, 30, 60 days, we're in a position to cancel the contract and perhaps go to the second lowest bidder?
Absolutely, but, you know, when we make the timeline and we put it in the report, we do reach out to the vendor to make sure that they, you know, agree with the timeline. There's some performance measures in there and stuff, but yes, you're correct in your assumption. Yes, we can do that.
Okay. I'll move the recommended action.
Okay, I'll second, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
And I think you said item F, is that right?
Yes, sir. On item F, Mr. Mayor, my question really relates to the deputy city manager and city manager in that we know that all you need to do is pick up a newspaper and you see where some system has been hacked. And so I guess in looking at this, certainly it's a project we need to move forward with. I'm not arguing that at all. I would just like maybe the city manager to give us a little bit of background on what's being proposed and how well are we really checking this out to make sure that all the security protocols are in place, or we have backups that in case we do, you know, be held for ransom in some situation, we're in a situation where we can protect ourselves.
It's an excellent point, and I think that you don't have to look too far to find cities that have had to experience this here locally within the last couple of months. It's something that we take very seriously and actually was the prompting to actually make the move to Microsoft Office 365. Essentially, by removing this from our control and putting it out into the cloud, we're able to provide additional security, or additional layer of security that we actually would not be able to produce here. That goes into artificial intelligence that is actually working constantly to defend these servers from either blunt attacks from hacker groups, or also they're in secured environments that are controlled by people that really understand the security apparatus of not clicking on certain links, of not actually opening bad emails. But what it does essentially is it takes that responsibility and therefore the risks and the cost of defending, and takes it and offloads it to a third company that obviously has the built-in infrastructure to handle those issues. I'm also, I guess, reassured by the fact that by going through this process in the way that staff has gone through it, by piggybacking off of another agency's bid, they've gone through an organization that is simply larger and more complex than our own, and so they've been able to test those protocols within that setting and prove them to be successful. And then for us taking that and translating it to our own system should provide us that extra layer of security. Now, all that being said, we will continue to do additional security upgrades as time goes on. This will not be the last IT system that comes before this council, especially as we move to make all of our services easier to access by our residents by putting them into apps or placing them on the website.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Chad, do we have, does the city have a cyber policy?
Yes, we do.
We do?
We do, and I will say this too, is we are, it's another thing that we will be taking a long, hard look at, simply because the- hard look at simply because the technology and the rules and what exactly the threat vectors are, they change constantly. And so we need to make sure that our internal staff and the council and the public is aware of what we're doing in order to safeguard their information.
Yeah, I know my company got one a couple of years ago and it covers ransomware or the ransom attacks. It also covers any shutdown of business because of a hack. And it was relatively inexpensive, but it covered quite a bit. And it's just kind of a nice little cushion.
I think that we're in a place right now where a refresh would be appropriate on our current policies.
Okay. Thanks.
Are we talking about the same thing? Are we talking about a IT policy versus an insurance policy? Is that, are you?
I think we're talking, the cyber policy.
Exactly. And they are tied together. I think that there's a, usually you'll have, organizations won't set thresholds as to where exactly they believe that they are willing to, I guess, pay or stop in terms of ransom attacks. There also is internal things that we can do in terms of running redundant servers and such in order to make hopefully the need for those type of policies obsolete. But that being said, the threat changes constantly, so it's good to have a baseline of this is how we react in certain situations.
Okay.
As more, as more businesses were getting held for ransom, the general liability policies wasn't covering this.
Right.
Cyber policies. And they are relatively inexpensive. I was a fraction of a general liability.
So we do have a cyber policy, insurance policy?
It's part of our, it's part of our insurance coverage.
Okay.
So, but again, we have to make sure that all of our policies align with what exactly the insurance companies say in order to make sure that we're not inadvertently, you know, mixing that coverage, which is something we want to make sure that we're doing.
Very good.
Move the recommended action.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we're moving on to item 12A, Approval of Employment Agreements for Finance Director, Development Services Director, and Recreation and Community Services Director. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Before the council this evening is item 12A, Seeking the City Council's Approval of the City Manager's Appointment of Craig Kohler as Finance Director, Ron Noda as the Development Services Director, and Emeline Noda as the Recreation and Community Services Director, pursuant to the Brown Act, Prior to Final Action Being Taken on Executive Management Compensation. There must be a verbal summary of the recommended action presented to the council. So for those purposes, I would just provide the following summary of the recommended action. If the city council approves the appointment of Mr. Kohler as Finance Director, Mr. Kohler will be compensated at the annual-based salary of $143,719. This is consistent with the city's approved salary and benefits resolution for nonrepresented employees. If the city council approves the appointment of Mr. Ron Noda as a Development Services Director, Mr. Noda will be compensated at the annual-based salary of $122,182 annually, again, consistent with the city's approved salary and benefits resolution. And finally, if the city council approves the appointment of Ms. Noda as Recreation and Community Services Director, Ms. Noda will be compensated at an annual-based salary equal to $116,361, I'm sorry, $116,361 annually, which again is consistent with the city's approved salary and benefits resolution. That concludes my summary of the recommended action. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them on my own or with the help of the city manager.
And if I can make just one quick comment, sir. Without going into, you know, the just incredible work ethic of these three individuals, I'll just say that they all stepped into positions that needed to be filled and have done an incredible job, I think, during what has been a less than normal year. They truly are part of the team that makes this city work and we are lucky to have.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from the council?
I'd like to move the item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to item 12B, Resolution Number 2021-18, Speed Hump Policy.
I'd like to turn this one over to the Director of Development Services, Ron Noda.
Evening again. So the following report was requested some months ago by Mayor Protam, Shelley Hasselbrink. So we went through the Traffic Commission, so I just want to make sure that everyone's aware, but we're bringing forth a speed hump policy. So I guess I'm going to go back to some history on it just in case. But in 2019, the city received a petition from Old Town West from the residents there requesting the installation of speed humps. At that time, we did not have a speed hump policy, so we instructed those residents that we could not install speed humps because of the non-policy. So in the meantime, that we offered them a pilot program that I believe the council is aware of, the Old Town West striping program over there. And that has been, you know, done, instituted. And we actually tonight did the notice of completion of the striping plan right there. But then we're bringing back the speed hump policy to, again, in case something, another neighborhood wants to bring back speed hump policy. Now, when I go over the speed hump policy, I just want to remind council that this is not pertaining specifically to Old Town West. This is a citywide policy, okay? So a speed hump, I want to differentiate, is different than a speed bump. So a speed hump is generally longer and it's on more of a residential street and it's supposed to just, again, the, the goal there is to slow down speeding vehicles. A speed bump is more on private property. It's smaller and it's supposed to provide like a sharper jolt to a vehicle. You'll see those a lot in a lot of the commercial centers around town, right? So some of the advantages of speed bumps, speed humps are of course the potential to reduce traffic and also discourage using the neighborhood streets for cut-through traffic. But there are disadvantages of speed humps as well. The biggest one that I believe is the impact of emergency vehicles, whether it's a fire engine or a police vehicle. As you are all aware, that when a call for need is from emergency personnel, sometimes seconds count and slowing down for speed humps will impact that and also damage to vehicles as well. It also might increase traffic volume. So people around town will know really quick that speed humps are in a certain street and they'll go through other parts of town to get to their destination. Increased noise level due to braking, sudden stopping, and of course acceleration as people go over the speed humps and other potential liabilities for damaged vehicles, et cetera. So when we presented this policy to the Traffic Commission, we did an analysis of several other neighboring jurisdictions and to see what they did, what type of implementation they did. And so we gathered a lot of the common themes from each city's jurisdiction, also knowing that each city is also different at the same time. And so I'm not going to go over every requirement that the Traffic Commission has recommended to council, but as you can see there in the requirements, that the street width has to be 40 feet or less, they have to have a daily traffic volume of 3,000 or less, et cetera. So when a, the process, when a neighborhood or a community member wants to come in to say, "I would like speed humps in front of my, in my house, on my street, or in my neighborhood," they have to meet these requirements first, right? And so then, once they meet those requirements, then they have to get a petition that's signed by 65% or more of the residents. And once the petition is received, the city staff will do appropriate studies, traffic studies, to, you know, identify speed, area conditions, et cetera. And then we're going to go to the Traffic Commission for their review. Once we present all those back to the Traffic Commission, if they do recommend this item, then we're going to bring back to, bring it forth to the city council for final approval. So again, in the speed hump policy, there is, I want to point out that there is the process of installation. There's also a process of removal as well, right? So again, as I, we did our research for other cities, a lot of people think that speed humps are great. They put it in, but then after a year or two, they're like, you know what, this might not have been a good idea. Or the impact of adjoining streets, that wasn't a good idea. So that's why we added the removal process as well, okay? So that's basically a quick, short update or background on the speed hump policy. I'm here to answer any questions specifically about the policy. But again, we did go through the Traffic Commission. They are recommending this to the city council and that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Can I get our expert opinion from our fire chief about what, what speed humps do to our wonderful fire trucks and?
That's how he's here.
Well, I haven't seen him in a year and a half, so yeah, come on, come on up.
Good evening, City Council, city staff. Ron Roberts, Division One Chief, Orange County Fire. Great to be before you. As the Director of Developmental Services said, we are not fans of something that's going to slow our response. In an emergency setting, seconds count, as he said, and we have seen these in different areas of the county. And I'm speaking to South County and they have been removed because it does slow down our response. The causing damage to our fire apparatus, that can be debated, but it's, it really comes down to response time for us. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is more a question, I think, for Ron and maybe for the fire chief.
They're both Ron.
Yeah, that's right. Can you give us any idea with the change in striping that's occurred on the west side here, Old Town West? And maybe this question either for you and/or the chief, have we seen any slowdown in the traffic? Because my experience with some of these is you put these things in, you're expecting a slowdown and in fact, nobody slows down. They just, because it's not a big jolt to their car, they just learn they're there and maybe brake a little bit as they're going over them, but it really doesn't affect traffic speed that much. So I guess my question is, are these really making a difference?
We actually have a Traffic Commissioner that lives on one of the streets in Old Town West and I know a couple of other residents that live and resides in that neighborhood as well. And they have told me that they feel that the striping is working.
Is working.
Correct.
Any other questions? Discussion?
Well, if the striping is working, why go to the next step? I guess.
We're not, we're not approving any speed humps here, right? We're just putting together a policy. I mean, we still have the, the opportunity even under this policy to say no to speed humps should residents request them. I'm just wondering, is there any harm in instituting this policy?
Again, Mr. Mayor, you're exactly right. This is simply to create a system in order for the city to be able to evaluate requests as they come in. Ultimately, the decision will obviously be the purview of the council.
Well, thank you for making that clear because I'm sure if I'm thinking speed humps are coming, someone else listening may have had the same interpretation that I did. So thank you for elaborating on that.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the policy, whether we activate it or not. That's going to come through the Traffic Commission. It's going to have to go through, you know, how does it affect police? How does it affect fire? What problem are we solving? Is there really a problem there? Are people just want humps type thing? So I, I'm in favor of the policy and then we'll just see what kind of life it takes on.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Sure, that's a motion.
I'll second. All right. Councilmember Nofolda seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I believe unless anyone else has a comment, city staff, I think we can adjourn. And tonight, we will adjourn in memory of Carol Silva, Sylvia, a longtime resident of Los Alamos, very involved in the community, who recently passed away sadly. With that, we'll adjourn. Thank you very much.